Please rise. If you would, bow your heads. Father, thank you for this day, and Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together. Father, we pray for wisdom in our meeting, and Father, we thank you for our first responders, especially on a week where we remember September 11th. Father, bless them and keep them safe. Father, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next, the pledges. Councilmember Graff.
Could join me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. We have no proclamations, awards, or presentations, and we have moved the citizens' comments on non-agenda items to the bottom. So we will start with the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next move to other council actions. Consider ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in FY 2018 annual budget. Ms. Minor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I guess it's not on, so I wanted to... The adoption of a budget that requires raising more revenue from property taxes than in the previous years requires a separate vote by the governing body to ratify the tax increase. Again, this is not the tax rate. This is just that we're going to be receiving more revenue from property taxes next fiscal year than in this fiscal year. This is as per Section 102.007 of the local government code. So the annual budget for FY 2018 will raise total... It will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $2,165,832, which is 8.38 percent.
That's under the current tax rate? That's without the new tax rate, right?
No.
No, that is with the new tax rate.
Your count, this is the new tax rate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Somebody? A second?
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The vote is four to one, and it passes. Thank you, Ms. Minor. Next, consider renewal of the contract with Weaver and Tidwell LLP to provide auditing services. Philip.
Good evening, Councilman Mr. Mayor. This agenda item is to consider a one-year contract renewal with Weaver to conduct a audit of city financials for fiscal year 2017. This will also include a engagement to do an audit for the landfill that we deposit waste into for compliance with TCU. The total cost of the contract is $106,200. We'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The vote is four to one, and it passes. Thank you, Philip. Next, under public hearing, we will open a second public hearing on the proposed tax rate and schedule a final vote on the tax rate. Ms. Minor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The property tax code, 26.06, requires two public hearings if the tax rate that is being proposed exceeds the effective rate. Based on the proposed tax rate of 49.3248 cents, the total tax revenues from properties on the tax roll will increase by 8.38 percent over the preceding year. We held our first public hearing on the tax rate on August 22nd at the regularly scheduled city council meeting. We are asking to hold a special city council meeting on September 25th at 5:00 p.m. to approve the... For the first approval of the FY 18 tax rate and the first reading of the ordinance. The final vote, the second vote on the FY 18 tax rate has been scheduled for the next day, September 26th, at 6:00 p.m. at the regularly scheduled meeting. Any questions about the tax rate?
Any questions? This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on the tax rate. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Next, we move to ordinances. Consider an ordinance amending City of Odessa Code on ordinances entitled Minimum Building Standards. Ms. Honor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Earlier this year, we implemented some minimum property standards for the downtown area. That downtown footprint is Bernice to Adams and First to 10th. When we implemented the minimum property standards, however, it was a more restricted area of Sam Houston to Hancock and Second to 8th, which is depicted by the yellow here in this map. The green is representative of the entire downtown, and the red is the footprint of the hotel. We'd like it this time to extend the boundaries of the minimum property standards to match the downtown footprint, again, which is shown here in green. In addition to that, we would also like for the property standards to apply to both sides of the boundary streets. Right now, it only implies to the interior side. We'd like to apply it to all of budding property to the boundary streets. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Honor. Item five, consider an ordinance amending the truck routes. Mr. Feldman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is referencing the truck route item again. It's further clarifying the way that a truck that is going to be legally parked or stored within the city limits take the most direct route from the truck route. That's what this clarifies in the truck ordinance. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions?
Could you explain to us how you're going to get this information out to the truckers?
It will have to be done through our public website, and when we... As part of the recently adopted truck route that uses Loop 338, the text dot will also help us with that, with their state website, as well as the DPS website that deals with truck routes. So it'll be text dot working on it. It'll be City of Odessa also.
Okay. Will there be any signs out on the interstate? Is that in our town?
As part of that project, there will be state... The large signs like you see when you go up towards Andrews, those big billboard-type signs?
Yeah.
Those will be posted on I-20, on Loop 338, on Loop 385 coming into town. All those points coming into town will get those large signs.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next move, resolutions. Consider approval of the general development plan of the Odessa Development Corporation. Mr. Carlson.
Good morning or good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I bring before you our general development plan, the ODC, is approved unanimously with the understanding that we are in the process of adopting a new plan. It will be prepared and be ready for your approval in a short period of time. Contractors are very familiar with this. We've discussed each and every item that applies to them, and we have contracts and proposals that will guarantee the compliance of this plan.
Okay. Are there any questions?
So we will have a new plan.
We will have a new plan. Your city attorney is working with a committee of our board to draw up that with some contractors involved in that process.
Any more?
So will you have a workshop to present that to us, or what?
Yes, we will. Our group presenting the form.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, consider approval of the budget of the Odessa Development Corporation FY 2017 and 18 annual budget. Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we have approved the budget for ODC for the year 2017-18. It was unanimously approved by the ODC board. We were visited with the finance committee, and we presented for your...
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm not real happy with it. I guess, actually, Charles, the biggest problem I have with it... In my district, I have a lot of retired people living on fixed incomes. I have a lot of single mothers with children. I cannot support spending almost $770,000 on advertising. I can't do that. That is ridiculous. I hope that you will look at that, and let's sit in with the council and talk about that. We spent that much last year. I don't see where it's that productive. I've just got a lot of problems with it. I just think that's very wrong for people to sacrifice paying for things and then have it spent in such a manner.
Ms. Graff.
It was a unanimous vote on ODC?
Yes, sir. Ms. Graff, I will tell you that we've looked at their proposal, line item by line item.
I have two.
It's broken down by each section, and we have discussed that with the agency that's going to be providing that service for us. We have a committee specifically designed for advertising and promotion. That committee has approved this plan. That's not to say that we can't revisit that plan, but our objective is to promote the development of this community, and we feel like our agency is representative of what our desires.
Well, my feeling is you're leaning more toward putting out advertising, and I think it's a whole lot more productive if you put more money into actually sending people out to bring in businesses rather than put all this publicity in magazines and books and on billboards and on the web and all that. I have to agree with you, disagree with you, so...
I understand. But please be aware that we have moved towards actually making more contacts with site locators.
I noticed that.
But when our representative goes to those locations, he needs to carry something that's representative of this community that we are proud of. We've spent money on film and physical materials and stuff to tell people who Odessa is, and that is important also.
Okay. Other questions?
How much of this is web advertising?
About off the top of my head, I can't tell you. It's, you know, it's intermingled, but there are specific titles in their proposal, and we've looked at each and every one of them.
Okay. Other questions?
I'd like to make a comment, but I appreciate all the work that ODC did, and an awful lot of time on the budget. Thank you all that are present that did that. Appreciate it pretty much.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
Okay. This vote's three to two, and it passes. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Item eight, adopt the City of Odessa FY 2017-18 annual budget. Just... Oh, Ms. Minor.
Thanks again, Mayor. This agenda item is to adopt the FY 18 annual budget for the City of Odessa. We held the budget retreat with you guys on July 25th. I filed the proposed budget on August the 7th, and we had our mandatory hearing, public hearing, at the last council meeting on August the 22nd. We are asking that you adopt the budget, total revenues of $210,925,772, and total expenditures of $200,865,901.
Okay. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider industrial district agreement with Hackelman Properties LLC. Mr. Long.
Sir, if you could ask these councilmen for your... What you're looking at is the property that we have discussed at the last city council meeting that we authorized for Mr. Hackelman, and this would utilize putting it into an industrial district so that he could properly proceed with his project.
Okay. Any questions?
I believe it's a pipe yard. I believe it's a pipe yard, but he has an extensive building under now. He has already purchased 20 acres, and he is looking at another 10 to 12 acres for... He's going to ask us also for, so...
So what's this blue area we're looking at?
Part of the flood lane.
Okay.
Is this the storage buildings?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Because we tabled that one, didn't we?
Yes, this is...
I'm sure we're clear.
This is the property that the city owns, but it's outside of the city limits.
Okay.
Some business.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 10, consider acquisition of property in the downtown area for economic revitalization. Mr. Long.
As the council was very well aware, we are in the process of trying to develop downtown. One of the properties that we have located that we feel like might enhance the downtown area by allowing for development and subsequent resale has come up for sale, and I'll let the rest discuss.
Good evening, Mayor. If we'll approve this item, it would authorize the city to continue the efforts to produce for 18-year grant. It's located in the downtown area and will cost $110,000. Square feet is 3,500 square feet.
Larry, where is it?
What? I'm not implying that we... The properties that we generally have been buying are rather large, and they're not able to be subsequently resold or re-leased for just a regular retail business to come in. And what we were interested in this building was it does have the square footage that would allow somebody to properly come in and put in a business, a flower shop, retail, that sort of thing.
Okay.
What is the average square foot cost here in Odessa right now?
Depends on the area, I think.
Yeah, it's all over the place, yeah, just depending where it's at. But this...
It can't be all over.
This is on the actual...
95,357.
95,357.
Yes.
Yep. Any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, item 11, consider authorization to proceed with the annexation of industrial districts 2, 3, and 4.
I'd like a motion to table this.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
The vote's four to one, and it passes. Next move to miscellaneous. Ms. Grimaldo, do we have any appointments?
Yes, for the Permian Basin Airport Board, reappoint Barti Grab, Gloria Benya, and Lily Taylor. For the Building Board of Appeals, Cruz Castillo and Sally White. And for the Planning and Zoning Commission, reappoint Jimmy Peacock and Renee Earls.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 14, personal matters. Deliberate the employment and evaluation duties, discipline complaint, or dismissal of a public officer or employees. I'll start with Larry Long. We do have some people that would like to speak, so we'll start with Dean Combs.
I thought we moved it to the end.
We moved it to the end.
They want to speak on item 14?
I don't think... Never done that before.
Yeah, we have.
We're going in to evaluate.
No, because if they want to speak on an item, that's all we've done in the past. So, Dean?
This is never here.
Dean Combs.
This is...
Mr. Combs, you'll have three minutes.
Is that all?
Yeah.
You've made a statement. I had... Based on the... I'm Dean Combs, 3733 Blossom Lane, Odessa, Texas. Former councilman, District 4. Based on the agenda going into executive session, realize that your actions will affect not only the City of Odessa, but also the lives of employees and their families. Make your decisions based on facts, not innuendo, hearsay, or what someone else has said. Do not accept the lies and half-truths spoken by some of your colleagues. Mr. Morton is a loyal, trusted employee. Think back to 10 years ago, what we went through. Who was there? Mr. Morton, the chief of police, and our mayor to see us through that difficult time. Think about that in your deliberations that you deliberate about Mr. Morton. Think about him, what he has done, what he has meant to this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Brandon Tate.
Thank you, Brandon. And Baron Tate, 64 R. Valley Road. I served on this council from 2001 to 2006, representing District 4. And while serving, I realized that every city must have four components that thrive. First, you've got to have a strategic plan and design. You have to know where you're going and how to get there. Second, you have to be able to execute that plan. You have to have... You have to turn that plan into a process or a work. Third, you have to have some kind of risk management, recognizing the adverse possibilities and potential need to redirect if necessary. And at last, you have to have leadership. Without the proper leadership, the first three components do not get accomplished without major cost or disaster. In 2002, Richard Morton McCain that leadership when he accepted the job as city manager. And looking on the... From the outside in, he hasn't disappointed. Let me give you some examples. Under his leadership, Odessa has seen our park systems upgraded by $40 million, our sewer and water systems upgraded by $72 million, $40 million in street improvements. He's done all of this while managing the city and increasing our tax rate by 22 cents. That's amazing. And as a visionary, he has worked with prominent... With a prominent Odessa family to revitalize our downtown to a tune of $80 million. Councilman Hamilton. I don't know if you realize, but when this project is completed, you're going to be able to put a feather in your cap because you're going to have the most beautiful district in Odessa, Texas. All because...
Just downtown, sorry.
All because this man I hear. I do also want to point out, every time you ask Richard about these and the other accomplishments, he's quick to give credit to his team of city employees. Why would you change to news in the middle of the river? Come on. Richard Morton is a man of integrity who will always do the right thing, even when it's not his own self-interest. He's a man of competence, whose record proves he's exceptional at this job in the city. He's a man who authentically cares for Odessa and Odessans. You know, there's a saying in Texas, and y'all have heard it, "Don't mess with Texas." Councilwoman, I'm here to humbly and respectfully ask you, don't mess with Richard Morton. Thank you, and may God bless and continue to bless our city.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Next, Sandra Oof.
Hi, I'm Sandra Oof with 74 Sebo La Court here in Odessa, Texas, and I'm the president of Official Interprets, and your partner in the City of Odessa in the Downtown Development Project. I felt the need to address you tonight as I can again... As again, I see that you're asking to go into executive session on a matter concerning Richard Morton, our city manager. As partners in the downtown project, I felt compelled to inform you of our concerns with agenda items that target city management. In a time when we all need to be united and remain progressive, our city council appears divisive. When you asked Toby and I to make this large investment in our city, we asked many questions about the commitment of city management and city council. We finally agreed because we asked Richard if he would commit to staying throughout the project, and he said he would. He'd been here for 15 years. You know, we wanted the commitment that he would still be here because, at that time, we knew that there were some council members' terms that were up in 2018, and we needed his assurance that he would be the constant. All of you said and have continued to say that you're committed to this project and you support this project. However, in the last year, there've been many times where Richard's job appeared to be in jeopardy. We tell everyone that we've enjoyed getting to know all members of city leadership, management, council, employees, and couldn't have asked for a better team. Our developer, our contractors, and design firms have all stated that Richard's one of the best city managers they've ever worked with, and they constantly mention how fortunate we are to have him. In addition to the hotel, Toby and I are considering developing a residential project downtown, but we've not been successful in getting any other Odessans to invest in this project because others have expressed concern about the volatility of the council. We need your assistance. We can't do this alone. We need your assistance. We need your professionalism to make this happen. We need to all stay committed to showing the world what a wonderful community we live in. We believe in this community. We would not have invested, and you wouldn't have invested in this if you didn't believe that, and I strongly believe that. But we've all got to move this big investment forward and not move back. I ask that of you, the city council, please.
Thank you, Sandra. Last, Larry Melton.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Larry Melton, and my address is 23 High Line Circle, Odessa, Texas. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. I became a citizen of Odessa in 1948. That's 69 years ago. And I began my term in public service, and then all the civic activities started back in 1962, which was 55 years ago. During those 55 years, I've had the good fortune to be associated with many fine organizations and leaders. I even served as city councilor of District 3 and later mayor of the city. I have worked with many different types of individuals, none any better than our city manager, Richard Morton. Richard came to Odessa as assistant to the city manager in 1998 and became city manager in 2002. He has led this city during the up times and during the down times. He's done so with professionalism and with dignity. I will not take time to enumerate his many accomplishments, but I can say without question that each action taken has benefited the City of Odessa. The success of any city manager is greatly influenced by the actions and thoughts of the city council. In my opinion, our current council seems to be more interested in building a power base for themselves than in addressing the true needs of this city. The council has a responsibility to represent the citizens, all citizens and not just the ones in their specific district. The council has a responsibility to make all decisions in public and transparent in all the city deliberations. The council has a responsibility to provide a vision, set goals, and make plans for the city to prosper. Meeting those responsibilities will not be possible without a strong city manager. I know that this council recognizes the strong leadership that Richard brings to the table and will support him, working together successfully. It is time for us to stop all the bickering that is going on in this city and use our energies to increase our efforts to make Odessa a better place in which you live. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now needed a motion to go into executive session to address city attorney Larry Long. Now needed a motion to go into executive session to address City Attorney Larry Long.
I thought Richard wanted to do his.
He wants to do his out, that's why we're doing Larry in executive session, because y'all asked to put this on here. Okay, that's what I was just, so we need a motion to go into executive session.
Who put these on, who put these on here?
Barbara Philly. So, do we need a motion to go into executive session on Larry? So, move, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Votes three to two, we are now in executive session. We are out of executive session at seven eighteen, and no action was taken. We move to the next item, personal matters deliberate the employment evaluation duties, discipline complaint or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Mr. Richard Morton has asked that this be done in open session, so...
I make a motion for the immediate removal and termination of our City Manager.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Discussion?
Yeah.
Richard, are you not supposed to be neutral?
What do you mean by that?
How many times have you gone into Larry's office and cracked him out for trying to help the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and telling them to let them fail?
None.
None? Did you not say that, Larry?
I don't crack the City Attorney out.
Larry?
He's complaining about my law.
Yes. So, how is, is any of the contractors supposed to move forward and grow and do good when there's people that are trying to, you know, within the community that are trying to sabotage? You know, I mean, I see all these people that are here to support you, some of them, and some of them are here to support me, and some of them are here to support other people. But where were they when we were given the, by the Odessa American because we look bad or they want to, you know, intentionally sabotage the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce? And at the end of the day, I'm just tired of it. I mean, that, you know, where were you to defend me the way I defended you? And I took a chance on you, and I said, "No, no, Richard is, you know, will not do that, you know, he's a good guy," and you left me hanging, in my opinion. You know? In my opinion, you left me hanging because you didn't stand up for the small guy. You didn't stand up for the people that need help when they need help. But at the end of the day, you know, we get called every single name in the Odessa American. I don't see anybody going over there to the Odessa American and telling them to leave us alone, you know, that we're good people. You know, I passed a background check, an FBI background check, a criminal background check, a credit check, and I still am not good enough for anybody here. And that's not right, you know? So, with that, I made my motion.
Okay, thank you. I can tell you, I've done nothing to harm the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce or the Mexico Initiative. I've done everything I can to help them. I did go to bat for you with the OA, calling Mr. Candy personally.
This was, this was not a project of the mayor and your, right? A big project of the mayor, that Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the Mexico Initiative. And at the end of the day, feel like we abandoned it, just because there's some, a small group of people in the city of Odessa that don't want to see it come out, that don't want to see it. Why? What's wrong with it? What's wrong with, you know, us building ties with our neighbors? You know, what's wrong with the fact that, you know, right now, Mexico is rent number twenty-something in economic development in the whole world? By the year twenty-fifty, they're destined to be number eight. Why not partner up with somebody that does like that, that, or that's going to be successful? I just don't understand why wherever we're at. And it's disappointing that we're still here. Disappointing. That's all I have to say.
I, I would like to say that, yeah, I agree with y'all. We're at a real crossroads in Odessa. We're trying to build up downtown Odessa. I think it's extremely important. You're a very likable person, Richard. I like you, but I'm not happy with your leadership. Seven and a half years ago, I became very, very concerned. After I was on the council, I started watching the reports about our lake levels. It was raining a lot. We'd had a wonderful, lots and lots of rain, but our lake levels were not coming up. Instead, they were going down. I went into your office to talk to you about it. Roy Hunt and also talked to you about it. And I was really shocked with your answer to me about it, that we needed to do something. And you banged on your desk and you said, "CRMWD has to give us water. They have to give us water." I said, "Richard, they can't give us water. They have to give us water. We have a contract. They have to give us water." And I remember telling you what they used to say in Kentucky, that you can no more give away what you ain't got than you can come back from where you ain't been. If they don't have the water, they can't give it to us. We need to find more water. I had an Easter egg basket. Those eggs out there were water rights. I had an empty basket. The city had an empty basket. You people had an empty basket. So, I guess you began listening because then Mayor and you announced to us, "Oh, CRMWD has purchased water up in Ward County. Oh, my gosh, it's going to be a hundred-year water." Well, every year it went down, and I don't know what it is now, but not enough that they can even use when we were having our severe drought. Then council was directing you about, "Let's, let's do D-SAL." I remember Austin Keith even went to El Paso to find out all he could about D-SAL. And boom, all of a sudden, that was dropped, and you were, we found out in Fort Stockton, dealing with them to get water from Fort Stockton. But you wouldn't let anybody help you. You wouldn't let legal help you. You wouldn't let Public Works help you. Well, we spent a little under a million dollars. We got nothing out of it. And then we find out that the city had less than one square mile of water rights, that there wasn't any way on earth they could even give us the water we needed. Okay? Then the next thing, I'm still hollering about water rights. I'm saying, "Let's get together with San Angelo, Midland, other cities, small cities, and let's get out and let's, let's find water rights." We, we live in the desert. We've got to have water. If we don't have water, we're going to dry away, and there's not going to be anything, won't matter what we have here. So, the next thing, you started in Ona Republic Water. Okay, they're going, they got this lawsuit. They're going to get us water. Now, the latest thing that I hear is, you think there's a company now or somebody up in Ward County that can get us water? Seven and a half years, we still don't have water. We've got to have water. I, I, I'm frustrated, extremely frustrated. We spent a whole lot of money on a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan gives us things that we need to do, problems we have with our city, things we need to correct. I haven't seen any of those corrections happen yet. All you have to do is give the word. We can't give it because we can't tell the various departments what to do. I don't see anything in this year's budget to take care of any of those problems, things that they recommended. I still don't see it in the budget. I don't, I don't understand it. I, I just think that... And you talk about the Mexico Initiative? I fought the Mexico Initiative because you wanted to bring in a bunch of workers, and you wanted to do away with our vehicle maintenance area and put in a brand-new company right in the middle of a neighborhood. Trucks going back and forth, all this? No, I did everything under the sun to kill that, and I think I managed to kill it because it's not there. That's not what we need. I think we need fresh leadership. I really do.
Okay, Barbara, I can't respond to all of those. I can't respond because half of that's just not correct. Maybe more. But I cannot change your opinion.
Other comments?
I am extremely proud of where we are in the city moving forward. You know, there's a thing called CRMWD that kind of slows us down in our water situation. You can say all the things you want to do about water, but we have got problems in regards to just the situation of three votes versus, three votes versus three votes. But he's gone to battle every time that we've asked him to be there. As far as the Hispanic, the Mexico Initiative, let's look at something. Let's see it. We see it, let's talk about it. We haven't closed that door. That door is wide open. What do we have to look at? If you have something to look at, I bet we give it our attention. These are not accusations against, why are you accusations against, against Richard? Richard's done everything he can to improve the lifestyle we've got within our city. We have a grand project going downtown. We've got things that we should be positive about, and we're fighting every day, and it wears me out.
Other comments?
Uh... Hello?
Go ahead.
I've been on here for three years. And have I always agreed with everything? Richard never, not, not always agreed with everything. I'd say we sit down and talk about things, and we come to, we come to mutual understanding, and then we, and we move on. I, I hope that I've never been to where you felt like I was putting pressure on you to do something because I'm the one that hopes the vote to think it's rid of. I hope not. I hope it's not been that way.
I looked around the room, and I looked at all of the city employees that are in here, all of these firemen that are lined up. Their, their, their concern that their boss is going, is going to be removed for no reason whatsoever. He's done a good job. This city has, this city is the only taxing entity of all the taxing entities that we have that has a surplus of money. We're fixing to give our employees a raise? These guys have managed the taxpayers' money well. They've managed it well. Richard has put together a team that has managed the money well. When you start taking that top guy off, then you're going to, you're going to end up with a fractured structure all the way down to the last guy that comes in here, the last employee hired. Nobody wants to, can you imagine trying to hire a City Manager right now to come into this mess? My gosh. How would you ever do that? You're not going to hire a City Manager of any, y'all, you may hire a guy that wants to start out, but man, I, you're not going to hire somebody to come in here and take over a project that we've got going on that the OSU have come in and done. You know, they've come out here and spent, I mean, they've put it all on the table for this deal, and we're going to turn around here and we're going to get rid of the guy that put it together or that was instrumental in putting this deal together? Come on, guys. Wake up and look. These, these people in this room right here expect this council to do the right thing. They expect us to do the right thing. Absolutely. Y'all not here just because you want to come see us.
Right. Okay.
My wife is saying, "Your conversation..." I can talk too, man.
Well, he was talking.
Your conversation with me does not match what you're saying right now, sir. Okay? Your conversation, what you're saying right now does not match what, what you've told me before. Okay? So, I don't like the fact that you're changing your story in front of everybody here, and I'm calling you out right now, man. I'm telling you right now, that's not what you've said before. So...
Right. Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to go there, but, but, but I can tell you, he knows how it is. He knows, he knows how it is. He knows how it is. And I have the right to speak.
Yes.
I have the right to speak my opinion whether you don't want me to or not.
I didn't say no, and I didn't want you to voice it. I'm just saying, it matches what you've said before.
I, I might as well out there.
Other comments?
Well, you know... Nothing, including this city, depends on one person.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. You want to know who's done almost all the work about the hotel? Larry and his staff. Okay? He's put all the work together. Sorry.
Okay. I want to speak for a minute. The Mexico Initiative has been brought up. I've always supported that because I think it makes perfect sense. But the simple problem with the Mexico Initiative has been leadership. I've been to Mexico more than anybody else in this room. I've been to Presidio more than anybody else in this room. When the Mex, when the Hispanic Chamber had to have somebody else do their books because under the previous director, they weren't being done correctly, and we've had to pay Weaver to do their books, that's a problem. We had a garbage truck. We had a big event. Going to be the greatest thing since, since sliced bread. We've sent it back because it doesn't work. The group in Chihuahua has no longer, does not a group anymore. Yes, the mayor is coming up here. I think that's fantastic. But now we move over to another agreement. The simple fact is, people expect results, and we're not seeing those. I had that conversation with Raymond. I had that conversation with Mr. Garza. He didn't like it. All of a sudden, he puts something in the paper. So be it. Richard has done a good job, you know? But, anything else?
Well, let me tell you about that garbage truck. We put together, I say we, the city, I didn't have anything to do with it. But they put together an RFP, and the specs were wrong. It didn't work. Now, the way the law says, and we had to do this, I think, with our fire department, uh, not too long ago, they came up with the chassis and the box to put on it. It didn't fit. Our specs were wrong. We had to buy that. We had to buy that. And we had to go back and rewrite the specs.
And we used that truck, Jesse.
And we had to do it over and buy it a second time. Now, with the way purchasing laws are, it didn't work, so instead of us buying it like we were supposed to, we said, "Oh, go change this. Oh, go change that. Oh, that doesn't work, so change this and change that." What you were doing was getting extremely close to someone's patent. Okay? The whole thing was done wrong.
No, the problem was, the hydraulics blew the lines because they didn't know a lot about hydraulics.
Wait a minute.
So, they take it and they ship it, no, they bring somebody here, and we let them work on it in our shop.
You can't do that. You can't go change those specs.
It wasn't. It was blowing hydraulic lines.
Yeah, because they blow the specs.
What does that have to do with Larry? With Richard at all? I mean, the thing about it is, is the thing didn't work. That's one piece of equipment.
How much money was spent on it?
What?
Mayor?
Okay, sending it out, driving it around, cost employee money.
Nice.
No one?
We worked very diligently.
I called the question.
To make that work. We gave him time, repeated efforts, repeated times to correct the problems that he just couldn't get it done. We all wanted it to work.
Okay, question has been called. All in favor? Please raise your hand.
So we see it?
All opposed?